Good evening, welcome to the October 4th, 2018 meeting of the zoning vote of appeals. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes and the amendment to the minutes?
Second.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Just a few things before we get started. The first thing is if you can, all of us, all of you who are here, if you can do us a favor and silence or turn off your cell phones because they interfere with our recording equipment. In addition, if you're inclined to speak to one another in the audience, if you can do it, not when you come before us, if you can do us a favor and go out in the hallway to speak because that also interferes with our recording equipment. And lastly, we are five board members tonight. We are two board members short, and so I just wanted to make sure everyone who's here is aware that in order for us to act in connection with an application, four out of the five of us need to be in agreement. So just want to make sure you're aware of that, and with that, we will get started with the agenda.
Okay, there are some changes to the agenda. We'll start with item seven on the agenda, which is J-10s Holding Suffolk County Tax Map 900-231-1-32. And then I'm going to go right to item eight on the agenda, which is 295 Montauk Highway, Inc., which is Suffolk County Tax Map 900-231-1-31. And then we'll go to item nine, which is J-10 Properties LLC Suffolk County Tax Map So items seven, eight, and nine on the agenda are going to be adjourned. I move to adjourn them until 10:18.
Okay. Did we do a motion on 106 Cold Spring Point, or are you going to do that next? Going to do that next?
I got to read that.
Okay, all right, so...
I got to open. I got to open all the J-10s.
Okay.
Right? Because they're re-advertised. So the board has jurisdiction.
Okay.
All right, then I'll move that items seven, eight, and nine, which is basically J-10 Holdings LLC and 295 Montauk Highway, Inc., which is part of the J-10s property. I'll move that we adjourn that to 10:18.
Second. All right, Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item 11 on the agenda is going to be Gwen Whiting re-advertized, move that we re-advertize it for November 1st.
Okay, it's re-add, so we don't need to vote on it.
And then item 12 on the agenda, which is Michael Esposito and Louis Esposito, I move that we adjourn that to 12:06:18.
We have a second.
Second.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And then on the decision calendar, the last one is Randall App, which we're going to put over till our next meeting, which is 10:18.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Okay. We go to beginning of the agenda, which is...
106.
No, just kind of go number two. Okay, that's more looking at hold up on now. Go ahead and call number two.
No, but hold on, we didn't do a vote on number one.
Haven't gotten...
Right, I know that she's looking for a document, I want to see if it's in there.
I see. Okay, okay, all right.
You want me to call two?
Yes.
All right. Item two on the agenda, which is call Bonnawant, 11 Wood Lane Hampton Bays Suffolk County Tax Map 900-173-3-11. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code to legalize the location of a shed. 330-11 Residential District Stable of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory side yard setback of 14.8 feet where 20 feet is required. And two, 330-76D Placement of Accessory Building Structures and Uses in All Districts in 330-83C Yards to allow the shed to be located within the minimum and total required side yard for a principal building and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction. Who's taking the lead on this?
Arkeithus.
I am.
Do you have the folder?
I have everything ready. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney. Not an attorney, okay. If you can state your name and address.
Linda Ruiz, Design 76 West Montauk Highway, Hampton Bays, New York, 11946.
Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, if you can tell us about the application.
We're looking for, we have a side yard setback that is, has a shed that is located 14.8 from the sideline, which is supposed to be a 20, 20 is required as per the CR4 zoning district, which is the zoning applied to this property before the subdivision map. It is already considered work done. The shed has been there for several years. It is attached to the fencing that is part of the property. So my client is looking to have the reliefs, this way that, you know, he's reluctant to move the shed. It doesn't have any aspects as far as the properties are all the same. You can't see it from the street. It's not hideous to any view at all. It's more like it matches the home, and he's not looking to hopefully relocate it.
Okay. Do we know who built the shed?
I have no idea. He actually said that it was there when the pool was inspected. I have no documentation on who actually built that shed.
But I presume...
I have to presume that it's my client who actually had the work done, but I don't have any back-up paperwork document to state which, when it was done, how long ago, all I know is that he said several years, but he didn't give me any documentation when I asked to approve that.
The reason I'm asking about it is because it's an asphalt structure, and we like people to get permits before they put up structures.
Correct.
Okay. The good news is that if this were 15 feet instead of 14.8 feet, I believe it would be a minor variance and we wouldn't even be having a public hearing. So, you know, the fact that it's almost 15 feet from the property line to me means, you know, really on its face, although, you know, we'll see if there's anybody here, I can't see how it can have a negative impact on any of the neighbors. But the other thing, you know, sometimes we do is when it's an asphalt, we ask someone to come in to explain what happened. In this circumstance, because it is so close to being a minor, I don't see the necessity of bringing anybody in.
I have a comment from Mr. O'Rourke. He wishes the applicant to provide a letter from a licensed architect or licensed engineer confirming that the shed complies with all current applicable New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Codes.
Yep, so this is something that's required in order for us to grant the relief, basically that the shed is stable. And so we would just need that and a written submission if you haven't submitted that already.
No, I haven't, but I will.
Okay, so we need that and written submission, and anyway...
Forty thousand square feet, we got to worry about giving them away first.
Right, right, yeah, I mean, you know, it's very, very close to being...
Hundred acre land there.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions from members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Bonnawant? Is the owner, the applicant is Ruiz, this is for 11 Wooded Lane in Hampton Bays?
Seeing and hearing no one, I'll move to close the public hearing for a determination on 10:18, leaving it open for written submissions for the request of Mr. O'Rourke.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Can you go back to number one?
Only if Candace allows me.
She does.
Okay, we're going to go to number one on the agenda, which is, excuse me, which is 106 Cold Spring Point LLC Kathleen Buckley and Anthony O'Farrell, applicants. Doesn't have a tax map yet. Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-155-1-30. Applicant requests the issuance of building permit P0799-333 dated June 20, 2018, and that said permit was issued without a variance for the proposed concrete retaining wall and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Move that we adjourn this to 11:15.
Second.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, give me one second if you don't mind.
11:15, yes.
Okay, we'll move on. Two, item three on the agenda, 192 Hampton Bays Realty LLC, 192 West Montauk Highway in Hampton Bay Suffolk County Tax Map 900-221-3-17. Applicant requests relief from town code 330-132 Filling Station to allow the subject premises to have a frontage of 170.67 feet where 200 feet is required along a collector's street or secondary highway. In addition, applicant requests a determination as to whether or not the proposed convenience store is a customary use to the proposed gasoline filling station pursuant to town code 330-5 definitions, accessory use, building or structure, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Good evening. For the applicant David Gilmartin Jr., Farrell Fritz, 50 Station Road, Watermill, New York. This is the first time this application is before the board. We've, in our application, said it was an unlisted action, so tonight what we'd be requesting is that you commence the secret process and coordinate with the planning board. That said, I think it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do the presentation on this because I think it is, the possibility that it would change the relief we're requesting, I think is pretty minor, but I'll defer a full presentation until we complete SECRE and then do that. That being said, I'd just like to give a little bit of background. I have a aerial photograph of the property in question, and as the legal advertisement said, we're looking to reconstruct a gas station at the property. The area will come around, but as you can see, we're surrounded by Stop &amp; Shop to our west, I'm sorry, Stop &amp; Shop to our west. This is the Macy's, Panera, we've got McDonald's, and then that's the property that we're looking to reconstruct. It's been, it's historically been used as a gas station.
Joseph Latch, do you own Latch property?
I don't know who Latch is, but...
Joseph Latch, Jr.?
Yes. There was a spill at the property that went through a DC cleanup spill, so we have that documentation, I think that's been provided to you. This is what the property looked like today, I don't know if that Orientian Hampton Bays to where it's at. The relief that we're looking for is on the front of the property. According to the special standards, it's in a highway business zoning districts, gas stations are special exception uses. One of the special exception requirements is that the property be 200 feet wide. This is 176, 170.6.
Can you have the extra copy for the gentleman behind you?
Extra copy of what?
The area, I guess, right?
Yeah, I have one right here. I just live in the area, I'm very curious.
Okay, I can't take your testimony unless you come up and are sworn in, okay?
No testimony.
Okay, I understand, we can't talk in the audience, okay?
And the other, the other portion of our application is an interpretation from this board that a convenience store is an accessory use to the gas station. We've provided some numbers on that, but I think it's a pretty straightforward application. Unless there's any questions, we look forward to going through the secret process, ask you to coordinate with the planning board, and look forward to coming back.
More than the planning board, right? Like the EAF list?
Yeah, but within the town. We'll deal with the other ones through their processes.
All right, well, we'll talk to everyone. We typically coordinate with everyone.
Okay.
I just kind of in secondly ask of course, let's David know is this is, was an old gas station repair shop?
Correct.
Never a convenience store there?
No.
Okay, so it must be for sale, you have potential buyer, that's why we're dealing with this?
Actually, I represent a new owner of the property who went ahead and purchased.
Okay.
And, you know, just for those in the audience who aren't familiar with the way in which we handle applications of gas stations and convenience stores, what happens is if we have an application for the convenience store use in connection with a gas station, what we ask is for dollars and cents per, as to the anticipated or existing profits from the sale of gasoline and/or also maybe, maybe for repair, auto repair work on the property, and then we ask for a separate estimate or actual number on the convenience store use as the sale, the sale of goods in the convenience store. Because we want to make sure the accessory, the proposed accessory use being the convenience store is actually accessory, accessory dollar for dollar to the gas station, which is, gas station use, which is the primary use. So, anyway, that's...
My owner's an experienced operator. He's estimated that it's going to be 88% gas, 12% convenience store, and I think that that's, looking at your prior decisions, it may look a little low, but you have McDonald's, you have Stop &amp; Shop, you have Panera, it's a pretty big commercial activity, so I don't think anybody's going to go to the, straight to the convenience store, they may have Stop &amp; Shop or other close opportunities. I think that was a fair assessment on his part, but we'll get deeper into that as we get further on the application.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of 192 Hampton Bay Realty LLC? If not, I have a lead on the application. How long are we going to put it over for you to, for us to, well, we got to withdraw SECRE, and you got to go to planning?
Yeah, I'd say...
Well, we've been to planning for our pre-app, so...
So it's really just SECRE?
It's just SECRE coming, you know, we've satisfied that part, so it's just SECRE, which I hope you guys will take the lead on, and I really think this is a ZBA, SECRE issue.
Yeah, I mean, we just need, we need 30 days to send out the letters, make sure we have the applications. You want me to talk to planning staff about only coordinating with the planning board? So maybe come back the second meeting of November, because the first is 11/1.
Yep, second meeting of November is November 15?
That's fine.
All right? Okay, so I would move that we adjourn the application of 192 Hampton Bays Realty LLC for all purposes until our November 15th meeting.
Second.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Item four on the agenda is Lisette Giraci, 79 Summit Boulevard in West Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-332-3-8.1. Excuse me. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code. One, to legalize the location of a shed. 330-11 Residential District Stable of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory distance from street setback of 12.6 feet where 110 feet is required. And 330-76D Placement of Accessory Building Structures and Uses in All Districts in 330-83C Yards to allow the shed to remain within the required front yard of the principal building. And two, to legalize the location of a pergola, which is 330-11 for an accessory distance from the street setback of 63.8 feet where 110 feet is required. And two, 330-76D and 330-83C Yards to allow the pergola to remain within the required front yard for the principal dwelling and a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Evening.
Aye.
I just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
No, I'm not.
Not an attorney, okay, so if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Lisette Giraci, 697230 Street, Oakland Gardens, New York, 11364.
Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, you can tell us about the application.
Okay, I'm applying to legalize the shed and the pergola, as it says. They were built over 20 years ago by my father. We didn't realize that he did not obtain a permit for it until after his death, and so both, in the meantime, both structures have been examined by the engineer, and so you'll see in the papers that they're built to code, and that, you know, I have them here. And because the way this property is zoned, it has a 110-foot setback, and the property is only 200 feet wide, so there's no way we could build anything on the property because it's impossible to have a 110-foot setback, because then it'll be, on the other side, it won't fit. So we just really, at this point, we want to just legalize it and both of the structures. The shed is a 10-foot shed, and the pergola is used as a great barber. On either side, in the, to the west of us is a transfer station. On the north and east side, they're owned by the town or the state, so they're not developed anyway, so we have no neighbors. And on the south side, it's also undeveloped. So it really wouldn't impact the neighborhood because it's been there for over 20 years, and nothing else has developed around us.
Okay. So I understand, your dad built the structures, so there's really no one to talk to about how they went up, because your dad just put them up.
Well, one is a metal shed that was, you know, it's Mann, the name of the company is Mann, but the engineer did deem it that it was up to code, and the other one was a wooden structure that he built, yes.
Okay, so presumably when he built them, he thought he didn't need permits for them. For sheds, sometimes people think they don't need permits for sheds, and it does get a little bit confusing sometimes about something like a pergola. But people do need to know that, at least for pergolas, you always need a permit. For sheds, not at the time it was built, but since then, there are sheds that are, that can be small, that you don't need a permit for as long as they're built in a conforming location, but in any case...
In any case, it's hanging out on some boulevard way down the road.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I mean, the only thing I could, you know, I could think of, and I'm not sure whether we want to do this or not, is have, you know, an estimate to remove, not that we're looking to remove, but just to show the financial...
Hardship.
You know, hardship, should, you know, should you have to remove the structures. That's about the only thing I could think of that we might want to have in the file.
That's not important to me.
Okay.
I'm okay without it.
You're okay without it?
I'm okay without it. It's been there forever.
All right, so we're not doing an estimate?
Your old man banged it up.
That's one less thing to do. All right. You know, and the other thing about this is that it is up against Rome Avenue, not against a property. It looks, that's what it appears to be on the survey, not against an adjacent property that will be impacted by it, so that's another plus. But we do want people to get permits when they put structures up, so, you know, and the questions I've been asking are questions we always ask pretty much for any asphalt structures, because we encourage people to get permits.
Right, and that's why I'm here, because we found out that it wasn't permitted, and we just wanted to legalize everything.
Okay, all right. I don't have any other questions. Oh, the other thing I just wanted to mention is that this property is burdened by two front yards, and that limits the setbacks, and so that's another, you know, becomes another issue in terms of putting any other structures up on the property, including the ones that are presently there.
Anybody know who this is?
Yep, is there any, is there anyone from the public who'd like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Giraci? If not, Cornelius.
Seeing and hearing no one, I move to close the public hearing with a written decision on October 18th. That's the next meeting.
Second.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You don't need to be here for the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, you just call Candace the next day.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, item five on the agenda, Wickapagh LLC, 424 Seven Ponds Town Road in Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-100-3-2.2. Applicant requests relief from town code 330-76D Placement of Accessory Building Structures and Uses in Residence Districts for a proposed rear yard coverage of 25.52% where a maximum of 20% is permitted for the location of a new tennis court and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Timothy S. McCully, 41 Meeting House Lane, Southampton for the applicant. This property is located on the east side of Seven Ponds Town Road. It's approximately 530 feet from Seven Ponds Road. It's on a, consists of 50,000 square feet, of which 41,000 square feet is contained in the buildable portion of the lot. It is known as Lot 2 on a major subdivision of River Circle Farms, which was approved by the planning board of the town of Southampton in 2016. There are 18 lots in this cluster subdivision. The zoning applicable to the lot is R20. The adjacent property on the east consists of a 25-foot wide access road, which is part of the agricultural reserve on this subdivision. It's the access road to that ag reserve. The property to the south consists of a 40-foot wide access road serving both the ag reserve on this property and the one to the south, the southeast. The property directly to the east is separated from the subject property by this access road, again, the 25 feet, and it is also burdened by a 50-foot conservation buffer, which was imposed as part of the subdivision in which that lot lies. So the nearest, the nearest structure would be on Lot 1 of the subdivision, which is just to the north. That's under construction, but I looked at the site plan for that, and the nearest structure on that, the being the dwelling, is 40 feet from the side yard, so you add up the 40 feet and the 25 feet, that you're quite a distance away. That would be the only house that would be impacted, that I haven't heard from the neighbors. I do want to hand up just a picture so you can see how this lot is situated. It would be right to the side of this house that's under construction on Lot 1.
You?
So the, the request now is to allow a portion of the tennis court to be constructed in the rear yard, will it will exceed the rear yard coverage, which is 20% allowed, by 5.52%. So it would be 2,597 square feet in the rear yard, whereas 2,036 would be allowed. No setback relief is being requested. The applicant could technically, in full disclosure, move the tennis court 10 feet towards the house and comply. However, that, I have a diagram that that would show, it would butt that tennis court right up to the house, there would be almost no access between there, and I don't think that that, weighing the benefit of moving the tennis court a little bit and not violating side yards and having the distances between the neighboring properties, I don't think there's any detriment to any nearby properties. I do want to hand that up, so you'll see what it would look like if we pulled it back to a conforming location.
Thank you.
And that's pretty much it.
So 20% rear yard lot coverage or 25.52%.
Yes.
We often grant the rear yard lot coverage relief for tennis courts in that vicinity, and in terms of percentage, we certainly grant in that, in that range.
It's a 55 by 110, the corners are already cut down.
Yeah, yeah.
We've cut it down as much as we could.
Yep. And so, you know, once in a while, we'll have people sink a tennis court. I don't, that's not planned for this one.
No.
So, and the only reason the sinking is, part of the discussion is related to noise. Have we heard from any of the neighbors?
Yes, I did. I heard from one neighbor, but she's across the street on Seven Ponds, so she's like 600, just inquiring what was going on. She said, well, we don't have any dog in the fight. That was about to extend the conversation. That's the only neighbor I heard from.
Okay.
I've not heard from the properties next door at all.
We do.
We do?
Yes.
What do we have?
Let's see.
Two emails. One email from Peter Pickett, and one email from Charles Shraf.
We have submitted.
Okay. What do they say? They don't like you. They don't like you. They don't like you.
That's sick. And Charles Schaffrin wrote a letter dated October 3rd. The letter is a form letter, basically.
Yeah.
And it pretty much says the same thing. He wants us to deny the application.
They're on Watermill Town. How do they get impacted by this? They're over on the next burlard.
Right.
I'm not sure.
Well, that's important, if in fact, they're not an adjacent property owner. We want to...
I don't think they are.
All right. And you would be able to tell by the notices, I would think.
Oh, they're not on the...
They're not on the list?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Let me just, let me double check.
All right. Okay.
Pardon me?
I don't think they are.
No, they're not. They don't look familiar to me at all.
Okay. All right. So I'm just looking for, you mentioned there was a third?
No, just the two.
Just the two. Okay.
Yeah, it looks like, just for the record, it looks like somebody, two people got together and decided to form a letter and send it. And I'm not sure at all how they get impacted.
Okay.
I mean, just for the record, the nearest road, again, the nearest property to this is the property directly to the east, and there's, we have the ag reserve road, 25 feet, plus a 50-foot conservation easement, so 75 to 85 feet for the nearest property. Yeah. I don't...
Any other questions, members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Wickapog LLC? This is for 424 Seven Ponds Town Road in Watermill? If not, Jason.
I would like to close the whole hearing for all purposes. I can have a written decision for you 10/18.
That'll be fine. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair of the House, aye.
Hello again.
Hello again.
Okay, item six on the agenda is Lawrence Fabian and Francine P. Fabian, 86 Chester Avenue in Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-69-3-24. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. One, for the proposed two-story dwelling with front porch and attached patio and a non-conforming lot. Two, 330-11, residential district's table of dimensional regulations for a principal front yard setback of 37.4 feet, where 40 feet is required from Maple Lane to the proposed porch. Three, 30-115 seat continuance for a principal front yard setback to 7.4 feet, where 12.9 feet existing to the proposed dwelling. And three, 330-83A, four yards, to allow a patio that is higher than one foot above ground to be located within the required front yard. And four, 330-84D, Pyramid I, for a proposed encroachment in the amount of 1,844 cubic feet, 1,392 cubic feet on the east, 452 cubic feet on the west. Two, for the proposed swimming pool. Three, 30-11, for an accessory distance from the street setback of 28 feet, where 50 feet is required from Chester Street. And three, 30-77D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in residence districts to allow proposed rear yard coverage of 25.3 feet, where a maximum of 20 feet is permitted. In addition, applicant requests relief from Town Code 330-11 for a proposed total lot coverage of 21.8%, where a maximum of 20% is permitted and any other relief necessary.
Court has jurisdiction.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, again. Members of the board, Timothy S. McCully, 41, Meeting House Lane, Southampton for the applicant. The property is located in the R20 zoning district. It is a corner lot with frontage on Maple Lane of 70 feet and frontage on Chester Avenue of 150 feet. And I do want to call attention that, in the application on the survey, it's called out as Chester Street. That's an error. It's really Chester Avenue. It contains 10,525 square feet, and is thus non-conforming in an R20 district. This property is similar to lots in the neighborhood, except for its uniqueness as a corner lot. Nearly all the lots here are non-conforming as to total area width, or as a result of particular development on any lot. Pools are common accessory structures in the neighborhood as well. I just have a series of pictures I want to, so you'll see the house that we're looking at. This is the subject house, and then I took pictures of the three surrounding houses. There's a package for each member.
Thank you.
The property has been in single and separate ownership since 1932, and the applicants purchased this property in 1977. The house and garage existed as, prior to zoning, as evidenced by a certificate of occupancy, 8088, issued in 1971. The property has improved with a one and one-half story dwelling and a garage. In addition to the lot being non-conforming, the garage and dwelling are also non-conforming as to setbacks. The garage is nine point, I'm sorry, 2.9 feet from the rear sidelines. The dwelling is presently 12.9 feet from Chester Avenue. The property was a subject of a variance application before this board in 2005, and as a result of that application, the board granted a 44 feet, a front yard of 44 feet, where 50 was required, and a rear yard coverage from 20% to 25.6. I don't believe there was any opposition at that time. One neighbor across Maple Lane called me about the application, but said they didn't have any problem with the application. In the prior application, the board found that granting the requested relief for the pool would not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, nor create a detriment to nearby properties, nor have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Since that decision and the findings incorporated therein were made, there are no significant changes in the neighborhood, so I think that still applies. So the proposal is twofold, to renovate the dwelling and to install a pool. Now, in order to renovate the dwelling in the way the plans are set forth, we would reduce the front yard on Chester Avenue from its present 12.9 feet to 7.4 feet, a reduction of 5 feet, to accommodate a covered porch, patio, and a proposed laundry room. But it's only a small area that's going to encroach further into, towards Chester Avenue. Very small portion.
Covered porch is a common amenity.
Pardon me? Pardon me?
A covered porch is a common amenity.
Yeah. So, anyway, under the code, we're entitled to hold that 12.9 feet, rather than the 40 feet that otherwise would be required from Chester Avenue. The steps on the patio are above grade, but the rest of it is at grade, according to the plans. One other variance that we need setback-wise is a front yard to Maple Lane to 37.4 feet, where 40 is required. It's really, basically, a minor variance. It's only for a small porch. There's already porch there. This porch is going to be enlarged a bit. I think, if I read the plans right, the amount of square footage that encroaches into that front yard is like, something like 57 square feet, something like that. Now, we will need pyramid relief. And the amount of 1,844 cubic feet grows, and that includes 528 that already, 528 square feet that already exist, and so the total new cubic feet of pyramid relief is 1,316 square feet. Of the 1,300 square feet along Chester Avenue, there's an increase of 948 square feet, and on the east side, it would be an increase of 368 cubic feet. All of the relief, if you look at the plans, is not incorporating habitable space. It's mostly just roof lines, where the eaves and the roof itself, the pitch of the roof, are violating the pyramid. Given the constraints that the applicant has faced with the size of the property, the pre-existing location of the house, we can't really do any modification to this house without pyramid relief. And the people who own the house, the applicants, who, by the way, are here tonight, they want to allow their grown family and grandchildren, et cetera, to be able to come and stay in the house. The house is relatively small right now in terms of living area. So for the pool, we're asking for 28 foot, 28 feet from Chester Avenue, as opposed to the 50 feet that would be required. As I said in the previous decision, you had given 44 feet, but we reoriented the pool because most of the pool was along the nearest neighbor. The pool has now been switched east and west, so that it's away from the neighbor as much as possible. It's going to require nonetheless a rear yard variance to 25.3%, which, by the way, is 3% less than what you granted in 2005, when the applicant was before you. And some of that rear yard coverage is caused by the pre-existing garage that sits there at 367 square feet. It's already there. We can't do anything with it. And the property, again, from Chester Avenue back to the west side, is only 70 feet deep. So, you know, it's very constrained in the backyard. The little bit of coverage, we're going over 21.8% or 1.8% over what's allowed, is, I would think, looking at the plans, is basically on that master bedroom that comes out on the far side, away from the roads. I would, I have a package of variances that you have granted throughout this neighborhood in one form or the other. You've granted rear lot coverage for pools on similar lots, up to 32%. So we're asking for 21.8%. So I'm going to hand up, I have a package for each one of you.
I don't think we're too worried about lot coverage, but hand in the package.
No, but there's more in it. Okay, more in there. And I would ask the board to pay particular attention to the decision that's on the top. It's Scott Weiss. It was authored by you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
It's a remarkably similar lot to what we have here. Corner lot, pre-existing house, pool, et cetera, and then there, they needed pyramid relief. The only difference is, here, the house is oriented closer to the road. There, it was very close to the side yard, but it was similar relief that was asked for and granted by this board. And, you know, you indicated that it was a constrained lot, it was small, the house was pre-existing, it was a corner lot. So I'd ask you to take a, you know, take time to read that, so that you understand we have the exact same application here. And in fact, our relief in terms of pyramid is less than you granted there.
Have you spoken to Mrs. Tyree?
Have I?
Yeah, the lady that borders the property to, appears to be the west.
No.
Now, formerly, Lillian M.S. Tyree, no?
No, I sent her a notice.
Okay. Yeah, I see a nice chunk of hedge sitting in this, middle of this, actually goes down past the pool.
Yes.
You're going to leave that there, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. All the properties are kind of screened, one from the other?
No, just the one to see it disappear.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
And from the road, this is the screening that's on the property of the, on our property, where the pool go behind. I'm assuming that this would have to be removed to do construction, but I'm sure that they would be...
That was part of my concern, that it's going to disappear. I don't want to see it disappear.
You what?
I don't want to see it disappear during construction, sir.
Well, you're not, you could, this is going to have to be moved from destruction, but if, you know, I think that they're going to want as much privacy with their pool as anybody would want on Chester.
So would I.
Yeah.
I want to see the privacy remain as a member of this board.
Sure. Okay.
We're all with it. So we want screening of the pool.
Yeah, we'd just screen the whole damn thing again. You can tear it up, you can't save it, you can't do the right thing, then we'll force the right thing. That's all. I'm easy to get along with.
Yeah, I'm not arguing about that, because I'm...
No, 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 just, I bring it forward, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
I ask about Mrs. Tyree, and if the screening remains, then she shouldn't have too much privacy.
Yeah, I don't think there's any, we're not going to take, we're not going to take down any screening between the Tyree house at all. That would be not beneficial to us.
Right. And then there's also the hedge running along the south, and then to the north, where the proposed patio is. Is that going to remain?
That's what we're talking about here?
Well...
Right off the house?
I'm talking about, yeah, the other hedge, Keith was talking about the hedge on the west. I'm asking about the hedge on the south and the east, and running up the eastern property line.
Yeah.
You see it on the survey?
I would... You're talking about along Chester?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm showing you here. And that's what I said, we would definitely put that back in, but it might have to be removed during construction. But it would be, if you want to condition the approval of all of this on that?
Yep, yep.
Fine.
Yep, we just want screening up both sides.
Mr. McCully, see, this is Mrs. Tyree right here, okay?
Yeah.
And then you put the pool right here, and on the survey shows a large hedge right here. It's going right down the west side of that pool. I want that hedge to remain.
Okay. Perfectly acceptable. No problem. Do you want to make that...
It's good for everybody, you know what I mean?
Yeah. No, if you may...
We have to swing in if you want to give testimony. Okay.
That's right.
It's fine.
Want to give me the variances, or no?
Pardon me?
Want to give me the variances, or no?
Yeah, Mike, what do you got?
Variances? Packet of variances?
Yeah. I didn't do that?
Nope.
Why didn't I do that?
You got distracted by the hedges.
The potential author of the decision would like to speak. Michael?
Yeah, this strikes me as a lot of relief. And one of the things in particular that bothers me is the 7.4 feet, where 12.9 feet had already, we know was existing and already granted. It's like, you know, kind of piling on variances.
But don't forget, don't forget, it's only that little jog. It's not, we're not doing the whole house that way. It's just that little jog.
I understand. But when you're sitting here, you're quoting precedents.
Yeah.
And now we're creating precedents that the next attorney is going to want to put, you know...
We don't set precedents here.
...a 60-foot house on because of that 7.4 feet that we granted for a little jog. So, you know, it cuts both ways.
Yeah, I understand. And the board always says, "We're not creating precedent. Every case stands on its own."
And there can be distinctions from one property to the next in all kinds of different ways.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So...
I understand that it looks like a lot, but if you look at the neighborhood, that's the way the neighborhood is kind of designed, and the thing is, is that, all I'm saying is, is that when you have these small lots, unfortunately, like...
No, I understand. I was there today, and I know the neighborhood, and I'm familiar with it, and I understand that we have granted relief in the past, many similar reliefs, but all at once, I mean, it's, it looks like we want to put, you know, a 10-pound house on a 5-pound lot. And, you know, in the old days, when people's houses didn't serve them anymore, they sold it and they moved into a bigger house. So now it looks like we want to create a big house on a little lot, and sometimes it just strikes me as, you know, we're going, we're going too far. And that's just my personal opinion, which I'm sharing with you at the moment. That doesn't, it's not necessarily reflective of what...
I understand where you're coming from, but in, you know, in the, in the old days, too, there were affordable houses around. Now there aren't.
Right.
Yeah. There aren't. And you know that, right? So...
And there are, you know, while it is increasing the setback relief, and it is increasing, it's increasing certain things, and I think reducing some things compared to what existed before, or maybe what presently exists. So, from my perspective, well, we have some relief that adds up when you look at it combined. Overall, it is, you know, a pretty small lot. This isn't a huge house. This isn't a huge house that's trying to go practically to the property lines. So, I mean, I think there are, there are some merits to it here, that is, that they have some limitations. So for example, if we enforce the, you know, the setback for the pool at, what was it, 50 feet? Was it the normal, the normal setback for the pool? Yeah, 50 feet to 28 feet, the pool couldn't be, they couldn't have a pool at all.
Yeah, and you've already granted 44, so.
Yeah.
And that was with the thing sideways in there, with then the more rear coverage was required, and, and this way we flipped it, so we reduced that, and also got it away from Mrs. Tyree's house, which was one of the things that we looked at.
Yeah, and, and when it comes, you know, from, from my perspective, to pools and tennis courts, you know, the, the main concern is about noise, you know, to me. So we're trying to screen to deal with the noise a little bit.
That's why we moved, that's why when we were looking at the plan and everything, we said, let's move this away. We're asking for relief here, let's do the best we can to protect the neighbors. So that's, that's the way we did it, that way.
But, but this proposed pool is, is being built right into the hedge, so it, it looks like there's going to be a challenge having a hedge on the side of the pool between this pool and Tyree. Is there a 16 by 32 pool? Is, is it a large pool for a lot this size? Is there any, any opportunity to, to look at reducing the size of that pool? I mean, it's almost, you know, a full-size pool that's frequently on like half-acre lot.
Well, the thing we can do is, we could take that hedge and probably move it back to the line, it's not right on the line, it can be moved back, and, and, you know, that, maybe work on the patio a little bit, I mean, but, you know, a 16 by 32 pool is a standard pool. And, and the board granted it the last time, so-
Right.
You know?
This is on a quarter acre, approximately quarter acre lot, okay.
I mean, I guess technically I could-
And the lot's constrained too.
Pardon me?
The lot is constrained also.
Yeah. I mean, technically, I guess I could put the pool back where it was and use the variance that you granted the last time, but I don't think that would be in anybody's best interest.
So since we, we'd be trading the setback relief for lot coverage.
And Mr. Daley, just for a little more to your point about, you know, getting larger encroachment of Chester, I, I would agree with you on that if a client came to me and said, I want to get to 7.4 feet and I want to do two stories and, and all the pyramid and everything, then you're really pushing it to the wall. But here it's just a small, small section, so that the laundry room can be off the kitchen. That's, that's the design.
And then the, the patio is going to follow that line-
Yes.
-as well? So it's the, it's the jog and the patio?
Right, and the patio's ground level.
All right, I expressed myself.
Okay. Any other questions for members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening thanks to the application of Fabian? If not, Michael, it's yours.
Okay, well, do we, do we need anything else? It doesn't look like there's anything requested from, on, from the building department, so we'll close the public hearing and have a decision for you at the next meeting, which is 10:18.
Okay, fine, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
A second, Ed.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Daley, for your commentary down there. All right, moving along, man. One second. Jesus Christ. 2287 Montauk Highway in Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-86-1-2. This is a modification request?
Yep, but we noticed it, so you got to read the whole thing.
All right, on May 3rd, 2018, this board by decision number D 018046 granted the applicant relief for setbacks, lot coverage, parking spaces, and the proposed location of a dumpster. By letter dated August 21, 2018, the attorney for the applicant is requesting that said decision be amended to eliminate the conditions related to shared parking at Newman Village.
The board has jurisdiction. Who's going to lead on this?
Jason will take it.
Jason.
Jane.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening, board members. Liz Vale, Carol Fritz, 50 Station Road, Watermill, New York. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. As the notice stated, this is a request for a modification of a condition of approval of your prior decision, number D 018046, dated May 3rd, 2018, which granted relief to demolish an existing one-story, 1,000-square-foot office building and construct an addition to the second story of 1,383 square feet to that, to create a new two-story office building in its place, which would result in a 2,383 square-foot structure total there. Specifically, the board granted lot coverage relief of 20.2 percent where 20 percent is required, total lot coverage of 65.1 percent where 60 percent is required, and waived other, allowed for other variances based on the fact that we couldn't meet transition yards here because we have two front yards for this lot in, in the HO zoning district. So this is a, we have two front yards, one's on Church Street, which runs along here, and then one on Montauk Highway. The subject property is 25,258 square feet, it's located in the HO zoning district, and the relief granted by the board was conditioned upon the applicant entering into a shared parking agreement with the Newman Village complex across the street for six parking spaces. You can see that Newman Village is thick here across the street in this area, and this is our property right here. I don't know if you want to see that. So unfortunately, although the parties definitely entered into negotiations in good faith, we were not able to effectuate the shared parking agreement. Upon discussions with Newman Village, we all agreed to the terms of the shared parking agreement, but when we started to investigate what, you know, the town would probably require to have a shared parking agreement as a condition of approval, it was discovered that Newman Village is, has basically, I think, at least 10 different condominium ownerships, and they actually have a shared interest in the parking area and would all have to agree to any shared parking agreement. So we'd have to, first of all, get a consensus among, among 10 different owners, okay? Next, upon that, we would need, as pursuant to the town approval, we would probably have to come up with title certifications and possible mortgage consents. And upon hearing that, Newman Village decided that they did not want to pursue this any further, even though we all both agreed to the terms and had really wanted to move forward with this agreement. So I'm left in a position where I cannot comply with that condition, and I'm seeking a waiver of six parking spaces in this area. So, you know, one of the things I looked at were waivers that this board has issued before and some of the standards in the code that you have to meet when you, when you seek a waiver from this board. Town Code, Section 33167 E2 provides that the board can provide a waive in whole or in part parking requirements after making findings that the normal application of such requirements is unfeasible because A, the lot is either too restricted or is unusual in dimensions, or, and B, there's no other suitable lot that could reasonably be put to use within 500 feet of the property. So here, although the variances granted for lot coverage were deemed not to be substantial by this board, the shape of the lot is somewhat narrow and longer, and the, being between about 90 and 110 feet in width. And additionally, the lot has two front yards with Church Lane and again, Montauk Highway, restricting the transitional yards that allow for parking. Originally, again, as was stated in prior hearings before you, these buildings were built when, I believe it was OD Office District zoning, which allowed for greater lot coverage and building size on the site. As such, it has unusual dimensions which don't allow for more parking on site, and it's too restricted, therefore falling into that category. Also, I looked at town-owned parking areas within the area. The nearest town-owned parking lot is approximately 1,000 feet away, located at 99 School Street in Bridgehampton. So therefore, there's really no other suitable lots that can reasonably be put to use within 500 feet of this subject property.
Does it have to be town-owned?
I think that was the intent, yeah.
Other town?
Public parking.
Okay.
The, the other issue is that I looked for other parking waivers as examples in this, in this area. So I, I did find quite a few that I wanted to just make, make sure they're in the board's record. The first one was Bridgehampton Inn, which is located right across the street, you may be familiar with it. It's a 60-seat restaurant, a six-room inn, and it has a retail space as well. There, the planning board waived parking allowing 22 spaces where 49 spaces are required under the code. There's a waiver basically of 27 parking spaces, and the town issued a negative declaration in connection with that approval. Watermill Station, which is actually an, an office building located in the HO zoning district in Watermill, I work there every day. The planning board by resolution adopted in May 14th, 2009, permitted the construction of six new two-story buildings having 29 units. The site required 130 parking spaces, and the planning board waived 76 parking spaces allowing the construction of 55 spaces and issued a negative declaration in connection therewith. One Ocean Road, which was waived by this zoning board of appeals by decision number D 03128, dated December 20th, 2012. Now, this can, granted the conversion of two apartments to office space above Ammon Restaurant in Bridgehampton. This is located at 2495 Montauk Highway in Bridgehampton. And in connection with this conversion to office spaces on the second story, the board waived four parking spaces, where five were already grandfathered. This, and allowed the park, the applicant to pay into the parking trust fund as a result. In the planning board referral indicated, the planning board indicated to this board that the waiver would result, quote, "in a total deficit of 62 parking spaces on site." There, the applicant successfully demonstrated to the board that was, that there's ample parking available in Bridgehampton, concluding, by submitting an analysis of parking in Bridgehampton, which concluded that there was ample parking available totaling 706 spaces throughout the hamlet, and submitted an aerial created by the town of Southampton entitled "Bridgehampton Parking," dated May 5th, 2006, summarizing all of these lots and restrictions. The last, the next one was Jane Kaumbach, by Zoning Board of Appeals decision, dated September 5th, 2013. It granted the conversion of two apartments to office space above Pierre's Restaurant, waived 10 parking spaces required in connection with the conversion. There, the applicant presented numerous parking waivers as examples that have occurred in Bridgehampton, either approved by this board or the planning board. Other examples of parking waivers by the zoning board of appeals or planning board include also B&amp;B Ventures. Site plan waived 25, 21 parking spaces. It required 117 spaces under the code, and they provided 96 on site. Hampton Library, located at 2478 Main Street, there's actually no parking on site. I was told they waived 11 parking spaces approximately in 2008. 2425 Montauk Highway. I don't know how many spaces were required here, it's a retail use with an apartment, it was waived by ZBA decision number 4772 in 1977, so it's, it's hard to say what that one was. Let's see. There's more, there's 2434 Montauk Highway Fairs, 13 spaces were waived by the planning board there.
Those are all instances where the, where the applicant came to this board and asked for a variance from it?
Not always, not, not, some of them are actually planning board approvals. It depends.
But they weren't conditioned, I mean, the, the unique thing about this application is that this condition is part of the negative declaration, it's not a part of the conditions from the ZBA.
It is, it's both. It's both. It's part of the conditions of the ZBA approval, and it's part of the condition egg deck, so it's actually both.
Well, it's built into the condition egg deck, and that's what makes this unique.
Yes, and I can address that as well. Bobby Van, six spaces waived by the planning board, there's no parking on site, around Swamp Farmers Market, right behind there. ZBA decision 9409, dated July 26, 1993. That waived two spaces.
Those are both on public parking lots, though, correct?
Um, yeah, they back, they back into a public parking lot, but they still trigger onsite parking requirements. And then the last one, I would say, is just Bridgehampton Commons, which is on for approval tonight, where the planning board's land banking-
It's on for decision for tonight.
On for decision, and the planning board's land banking 100 parking spaces. So this isn't something that's not contemplated by the town.
Do you want to submit that?
Yes, I did submit it in writing, but I can submit the actual decisions if you want them as well.
No, it's not necessary.
It's part of her, the request.
Right, right. So, I'm sorry. So the only thing I just wanted to mention about this that is, I think, part of, part of why we're kind of in this situation now with, with the move to amend the decision, was that the understanding was at the very outset of the, of the process, in the beginning, that was that this shared parking was, agreement was going to happen. We all, I think the whole application moved forward in reliance upon that that was going to occur, that ended up being a condition of the decision, and now-
That's very fair to say.
Yes, and, and, and now we're, you know, having to grapple with, you know, the circumstance where that's, that's no longer a possibility, and then the question is, what, what do we do under the circumstances? And I think what you're indicating is that parking has been waived, you know, for, for a lot of properties in the Bridgehampton area. I'm, when it comes to parking, I, you know, definitely like to hear from the planning board before we do anything.
Okay.
So I don't know whether we've gotten anything, or whether we've submitted anything into a referral to the planning board on, on this request.
I'll double check, but I don't think that did a referral for the modification request.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't know if it's required, but, but it would seem to me that it might be a good idea, because they, they, you know, they deal with parking issues and waivers of parking-
They did the analysis, it was a creative, you know, it was a creative solution. They, the parking, the planning board did do the analysis for Newman Village to indicate they had enough parking, but I do have some correspondence from Newman Village, just so you don't have to rely on my representation alone, that we did move forward and we were coming to an agreement with respective terms, and it just wasn't a practical outcome for them.
Fell apart.
It fell apart.
Yeah.
No, in certain terms.
You know, what, what stands out for me was the testimony of the neighbors at the first hearing-
Right.
-about the existing conditions now with the existing offices and space being an issue and a problem. And for me, that additional parking gave me a little bit of cover in my own belief that, okay, not that I necessarily believed that they would ever be used, but, you know, if people are going to do the right thing, you know, the, you know, it could be, if staff was, was instructed to park over there, that could have been helpful. Without it, I, I have, I have difficulty with this.
I mean, I would just keep in mind that, you know, the variances that were granted were, were not huge variances, you know, they were pretty close as far as the relief we required again, and that it really is just a second-story addition to an office space. And that technically, you know, I know, I did watch the hearings, I saw those comments, and, and I, I did appreciate what that neighbor was saying, they live on Church Lane, and they're opposed to people parking on Church Lane, and I would just submit that that legislatively is something that the town board could deal with. But at this point, you know, we're, we're seeking this, this expansion, and I'm asking for this relief. And I don't think it's a huge ask when you look at the totality of relief that's been granted for similar situated applicants in the past.
Yeah, and in Bridgehampton in particular, we've had, you know, a handful of applications where we're really dealing with the broader issues of parking in, in that hamlet, and, you know, how to deal with it, and how to deal, deal it in a way that's fair from one property to another. I do remember the, the application above Ammons, and I remember having a, a detailed discussion during that application. We want people to have enough parking, but in the summer, in the, in the midst of everything, there are going to be problems with parking no matter what we do. And, you know, absent a parking garage going up somewhere, which I don't think probably anyone in Bridgehampton wants, you know, near Main Street, all we can really do is try to be fair in the way we, we deal with different, different property owners, different applications.
And we're willing to pay into the parking fund as mitigation. I just think, you know, it's a difficulty to try and locate parking or coordinate parking with an off-site owner that we don't represent or control.
Yeah.
And that was what, what, what happened.
So, so that's a possibility for, for, for the- So that's a possibility for the waiver would be you pay into the parking
Absolutely.
into the fund, which I believe is what we did for One Ocean Road.
What amount would that be, do you know?
It's, under the code, it's $2,000 per space.
And I don't know where the money goes that goes into the parking fund, but I think the idea is for some day for there to be more parking.
The condition neg deck, I did vet that issue with the town attorney's office, and it can be amended. So, I mean, I think I spoke to counsel. It would just be another, it would require another notice in the EMB.
Yeah, and a finding that there's no negative impact.
Right, and a finding that it doesn't result in a positive declaration and a negative impact to the environment by creating a 1,383-square-foot addition to the second story.
Okay.
And waiving of six parking spaces on-site.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? What's the process by which, who would ask the town to look into not allowing parking on Church?
Somebody would have to go to one of the town board members and ask them to amend the code to put in parking restrictions. I mean, it's not, it doesn't come from this board. It comes from the public.
It does not come from this board. It can't be referred.
No, usually it's the residents who live on that street when they're just fed up. You know, they ask for the traffic study to be reviewed, and then they put it in place.
Yep, or some signs, yep.
Or even restrictions on parking, you know, at certain hours. All of that is something that has to be initiated and go before the town board, that is initiated by the property owners in the area. So, but in the meantime, procedurally, other than getting a referral report from the planning board, is there anything, because is CICRA impacted? Do we have to deal with CICRA on this?
Well, that's what Liz was saying, yes. I mean, assuming this board wants to move forward with this and grant the waiver, this board has to make a finding that removing that condition from the negative declaration will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. And then we publish it with the EMB. We'd have to inform everybody that we coordinated with. But if you're going to refer it to planning, then that would be covered. And then you wait 30 days, see if anybody makes any comments from that publication, and then you can render a decision.
Okay, I think we're...
Do you have any other questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Well, before we do anything further, I want to ask if, well, any other questions from members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of 2287 Montauk Highway LLC? Sir, if you want to either, you can have a seat or go up to the podium, whatever you prefer. Okay. And I just have to swear you in, so if you can state your name and address, unless you're an attorney.
I'm not an attorney.
You're an attorney, okay.
My name is Gerard Widershoven. I live at 43 Church Lane in Bridgehampton.
Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
Gerard, can you just play your last name for me? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Gerard, can you tell us what you'd like to tell us tonight?
Okay, I live exactly across from the, where's the...
So here's the property. I don't have your property.
Here's Church Lane. So this is your outlet, where you come out. This is my property right here.
Right here.
So you're adjacent.
Across the street.
Directly across the street, yes. I have somewhere, but anyway.
Okay.
I had no idea that this had already been decided in terms of if you could get the six spots, then everything would be okay. Because we only had spoken about the lack of parking at first. There must have been another meeting in between that I wasn't aware of.
No, it was just the decision.
But anyway, the...
And that must have been discussed during the prior public hearings.
It was.
Yeah, it was, yeah. Oh, yeah.
It's my fault that I didn't know about it.
Okay.
Anyway, so the new building that's proposed will have 20 parking spaces. And right now, the existing building, which is 4,420 square feet, and for every 180 square feet, you need a parking spot. So that would mean there were actually 25 needed. But at some point, eight parking spots were, I think, by paying into the...
Okay, and you have to address your comments to us, okay?
At some point, I think in 2007, there was a variance already done for the parking on this lot. So eight stalls were paid for into the parking fund. So right now, they are actually functioning with 18 spots, where as of the size of the property, they would need 25. Two of which should be handicap parking. There's only one, but that's also occupied every day, not by a handicap person. That's neither here nor there. So with the addition of the 1,383 square feet, there would be another eight stalls needed, meaning that really, they should have had 33 stalls, and they're going to end up with 20. That's, to me, that seems a bit of a problem. Living across the street, I noticed that occasionally there's two or three cars parked outside of the lot. And about three weeks ago, every spot was taken. Eight cars were double parked in the lot. So there were 26 cars on the half-acre of lot. Several on the highway, and two on Church Lane. So I feel that this property, for Saunders, who are very successful, is just way too small at this point to make it bigger and make the parking problem even worse. It just doesn't make sense. If you build the second story, the effect on my life will also not be very nice, because they'll be looking right into my house, overlooking my yard, my pool. And I just found this. It's New York State ZBA guidelines for considering variance requests. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. So I think the second story will definitely have an effect on my enjoyment of my...
Hold on, the second story is not the subject of this application.
Parking.
It's only the parking.
Okay.
Arguably, it's connected.
I understand.
And you can't build the second story if you decide not to waive the parking.
I understand, but what we have before us is a waiver.
I guess I missed that thing, but there's already so much traffic on Church Lane right now, and 80% of that goes in and out of Saunders. The block between the church and the baseball field, because at the end, you can only make a ride onto Montauk Highway, it's a very quiet street. So all the traffic goes in and out of Saunders. So basically, I think that Saunders has outgrown this property, and by making it bigger, you're only increasing the problems that already exist.
Okay, so you want us to deny the relief?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for your attention.
Okay, absolutely, all right, thank you.
And I don't have a signed notice that there's eight people on the block that have asked you to please come and plead this, because everybody feels the same way.
Okay, appreciate your comments.
Would it help if I get a letter from everybody on the block to sign?
Well, I'm pretty sure we're going to be leaving it open for written submissions anyway, at least, because we've had some things to square away. So you'll have an opportunity to submit if you'd like to do that, if you'd like to put a petition together.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good evening.
Okay, you too. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of 2287 Montauk Highway LLC?
I just wanted to ask something. The section that you talked about, Liz, about the ZBA waiving the parking, when you talked about the town parking lot, you know, the town-owned operated public parking, that's E1. E2 just talks about any other lot. So are there any other lots that, within 500 feet, that can be used?
Not at this time, no. Not right now, nope. There's no, I mean, I, no.
Yeah, and what the gentleman Gerard mentioned about the amount of parking spaces that are required versus the amount that you have there, can you just maybe, if you can state again exactly how many exist and how many would be required?
So, yes, I have. The parking waiver request here today would be for six parking spaces. There was a prior waiver that was granted when it was OD-zoned, when it was proposed to be two medical offices back, I believe, I want to say 2009, but I'm not exactly sure, where they waived and paid into the fund for eight spaces. And that's the history of the site.
Okay, so they paid in for eight spaces, and now we're looking for another six?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Right. Which, again, I don't think is outside of the scope of what's been granted by the town in the past based on all of the examples I've provided. One of the things that came up, I did watch the prior hearings, and I heard this testimony. But one of the things that came up in the prior hearings that I don't know was ever resolved before the board that I wanted to ask about, was that Mr. Bennett, every time he came here, objected to the designation as an unlisted action and asked whether, and put on the record that he thought it was a type-two action pursuant to 6 NECRR, Part 617.5C7, because we're only constructing 1,383 square feet, and it would result in the total construction of a building that's the size of 2,383 square feet. And that section of the CICRA regulations specifically designates a type-two action for the construction of a non-residential structure involving less than 4,000 square feet. So I just wanted to know how that was resolved. It came up twice at both meetings. Mr. Bennett objected to the designation as an unlisted action and asked the board to consider that this was a type-two action.
It was resolved by the adoption of a neg deck, coordinating CICRA under unlisted, and adopted and not challenged.
Yeah, we respectfully disagreed with Mr. Bennett's argument there.
Okay, I just never heard the board articulate why.
It's in the decision.
It's in the decision.
Well, yeah, it was deemed an unlisted, coordinated, and condition neg deck adopted.
And my view of CICRA is that we want to err on the side of caution. Because if we don't, if there's a question as to whether we complied with CICRA at all, pretty much anything that we do has to be redone. So I would rather be more inclusive in terms of dealing with any secret analysis than less. And, well, Mr. Bennett may prefer in certain instances that we do less. I don't know if a court would agree or not, and I'd rather be on the side of that we complied with CICRA.
Okay. Do you need the case law with respect to the amendment of the condition neg deck for the record?
Sure.
I have it.
Sure.
I know I said to buy email, but I thought you might want a copy. Just for the record. There you go. Thanks, Keith.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So we're going to leave this, I guess, we have to do secret coordination?
Well, not secret coordination. I think you make your referral report to the
Okay.
Planning Board.
Yeah.
And then I think you should come back to decide whether or not you're going to amend it, so that that decision, one way or another, will be published in the EMB.
Okay.
So I think you should adjourn it to another date, get it before the planning board. And then Liz can come back and respond to the referral, and you can come back and respond to the referral and make your secret finding on that.
Okay. So when would you like to come back?
Whenever you'll have me.
So, I don't know. Do we want to do, is November 1st too soon?
No, that's fine.
That's fine?
Well, how many planning board meetings are in between then? Just one?
Right, right.
Two?
Yeah.
And then I'll just follow up with them, if I'm not sure. I probably won't be doing referrals then, probably until Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay.
And then they only have, I think, depends on which agenda they put it on.
Yeah, and November 1st is also Day Camp?
That's up to her. She wants to sit here.
Or maybe Day Camp. You'll come, really?
Unless you don't want me to, but I won't. Is it two-pack, that agenda?
Well, only because of Day Camp, it may be a long agenda.
Even with the Day Camp, you're looking at at least 10.
Yeah, yeah.
So the next meeting?
The next meeting would be the 15th.
Okay.
We'll do the 15th instead?
That's fine.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn until 11:15.
Okay, and open for all purposes.
Open for all purposes.
Okay. Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
You're outside.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You have a good night.
Do we have that file?
Oh, Helen's not here for this one, too.
She's not here for this one, too.
Oh, no, we have it. It's on the top.
She was the one that campaigned.
Yeah.
Nope, we have one more.
One more.
We got one more.
Got an audience.
Don't go home yet.
He's like, no, no, just, yeah. Skips into this thing.
All right, what we got here?
Toplands.
Toplands. Excuse me. Anyway. Under the holdover application number 13, Toplands Realty Holding LLC. This is from our 9/20 meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll swear myself in first.
If you were sworn last time, just your name and address is good.
Brian Locasio with the Adam Miller Group, 2462 Main Street, Suite 7 in Bridgehampton. Very short presentation, but I do have a submission that I would like to... Should be enough. All right. So first, and easiest item to hit, is the updated survey, which you did get a reduced-size PDF of last meeting, which demonstrated that Lot 1 does satisfy the required minimum lot width of 175 feet from the pre-existing front yard setback, around 177.45. And I also had the surveyor show the distance of street frontage on William Street of 99.51 feet, to show that we are, in fact, over 40 feet as required under Section 330-82 of the Town Code. And then I have a 2006 Supreme Court decision, which I'm going to read the holding, which basically grants you guys the authority to render a decision upon receipt of the planning board referral, which you did receive, and I will address those points. But, so the case you have is Denon. I have one extra. Do you have enough?
We actually have too many.
Okay, I'm happy.
I'll take one.
You want it?
I put the original in the file.
So page 3 of the case Denon v. Town of Port Haven, South County Supreme Court case, 2003. I underline the relevant language. First part, it says, it was a very similar application, just as a factual background. It was a lot pre-existing. They wanted to do a two-lot subdivision. One of the two lots was undersized, so they had a similar approach. They went to the zoning board, and the town board would not allow the zoning board to render a decision. And the applicant brought a suit against the town and was successful, which held that the zoning board does have jurisdiction to grant a decision. And so on page 3, the Zoning Board of Appeals has original jurisdiction to entertain applications of variance. As you know, I'm here for the sole purpose Requiring the planning board to render its determination of an application containing requests for relief require the variances, first, one by law is required to turn down the applicant because it does not comply with the zoning code. Thus depriving the Zoning Board of appeals its exclusive jurisdiction to determine the issue of granting variances with recommendations from the planning board as per Town Code." So, um, so basically, why I'm here is because the planning board operates within the code. Without this request of relief, our client cannot proceed with a planning board application for his desired two-lot subdivision, which, as I demonstrated last week, last meeting, these lots do conform with the nature and size of lots in the surrounding area. And we would just be back here again after a planning board approval. And you guys have the authority and the jurisdiction to render this minor variance that we are requesting, and we do have every intention and understanding that we do have to go before the planning board. And if any additional relief were required upon completion of that process, we do understand that is a, you know, gamble that we're taking by taking this approach, but our client wanted to know that you guys do approve of his two-lot subdivision, so he can then proceed with the more timely and cost-burdenous process of a full planning board approval. With respect to the planning board's comments from their review, point one, where they strongly recommended that you adjourn the matter, I just addressed that with the case law submitted.
They wanted adjourned for what? For you to make a full application? For you to make a pre-application?
Pre-application.
Submit a complete pre-application. Two-point A, it's the very basis why I'm here, for the minor variance relief of the two lots. To B, if that is the case, then that's something we would have to deal with in planning, or it may require us to come back before you. But, again, we're here solely for the purpose of lot area relief. We're not requesting any setback relief. Point three, we're not interested in a cluster. Again, you know, we wanna know if this plan is acceptable, so we can proceed the planning. We're well aware of clearing, and we will comply as required. And point E, I acknowledge on the record, William Street is a private street. We had public testimony. While our application does not request relief of William Street, you know, they voiced their opinion. We're respectful of it, and we make no request over William Street. I'm just purely demonstrating that we require this mentioned code of three-thirty-eight-two. And as I mentioned, the code does not differentiate between a public and private street. So, again, we feel that we meet that code. And I ask that you guys exercise your authority and close out this public hearing and render a decision for a lot area relief.
Okay. So, the planning board wants us to hold it off, open, or actually send you to, to have, to them, to submit a pre-application to them, and before we act, they pretty much want, they want us to hold the application open. You'd like us to close it, amend a decision. I tend to, speaking for myself, when another, when another board, whether it be Planning Board or Conservation Board, wants us to do something, you know, I, you know, strongly consider whatever it is they're, they're recommending. I mean, in reality, you need approval from both boards. So, it isn't really holding you up that much, although you're going through an extra, you're going through an extra step. The only concern that I have is, is this something that we normally do? You know, having, sending to, an applicant to, for subdivision relief to Planning Board for a pre-application, you know, a pre-
Well, it's not something this board usually does. Usually, the applicant just make all, they typically make the application simultaneously. You know that sometimes Bennett and Reed will not go to the Conservation Board first, so then you say to them, you don't have to go to the Conservation Board, and, and we wait. It's, it's a preference. I have seen this case before. I kinda think this case stands more about actually securing a permit and not necessarily filing a pre-application report. The board has, you've given testimony that you support this. The relief is minor. I don't, I mean, it's, it's up to the board. You do wait for referrals?
In this case, it's, as I said at the last meeting, it's so, in my opinion, just speaking for myself, it's so minor, what you're asking for, I can't imagine that we're gonna go against you at any point. I would have no problem closing it out and rendering a decision at the next meeting.
Or you could do a poll. I mean, would your client, would your client proceed with a, you know, polling the board? Or he, you really want the decision?
We'd refer a decision.
Okay. You guys gotta, you guys gotta decide if you wanna proceed-
I'm with Courtney.
-without the Planning Board referral report.
Okay.
All right. So, before we do anything, the, the gentleman who spoke, neighbor who spoke before, I think I'm sure wants to, wants to say a few words, so. Good evening?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. What numbers?
I know you were previously sworn in.
I was, yes.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Brian Frank, one-forty Old Country Road. I'm the owner of the adjoining property to the west. I've reviewed the Planning Board's comments, and I, I support them strongly. I wanna run through it in a minute, but I respectfully think it's a little bit backwards for the, for this board to grant the variance without a properly designed subdivision. I hear Member Kelly's position that these are minor in, in size, the square footage, but at the end of the day, what you're doing is you are creating another lot. You are creating a lot that doesn't meet zoning. You are increasing density in this area, so whether it's by a few thousand feet or tens of thousands of squeet, that, the feet, that, that's the net result here. And there's still very light information in this file. I understand that this might be more cost-effective for the applicant to pursue this with the board this way, but, but I would respectfully offer to the board, as a land-use professional with twenty-five years of experience, that this is poor land-use planning to back into a decision this way. This is an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE, the division of the property. This lot area variance is necessary for that. The applicant has not provided any information to demonstrate that they have satisfied any of the five parameters that are required for the issuance of the variance. You know them well. I'm not gonna, I, I wanna be respectful of your time and, and not beat a dead horse, but you know it's character of the neighborhood, it's the reasonability of alternatives, it's whether it's a self-created difficulty, whether it, whether there are environmental impacts. The Planning Board has emphatically asked you to hold off on this, and, and I hate reading to board members, but under the circumstances, and this may be my last chance to make my, my case to you guys, so I hope you'll indulge me, but the Planning Board says, the Planning Board strongly recommends that the zoning board adjourn this matter until the applicant submits a completed pre-application, and the Planning Board has conducted a thorough review of the proposal. In support of this, they raised several legitimate land-use concerns about this application. The Planning Board finds that there are other options outlined in Section three-thirty-nine of the Town Code to increase density that have not been explored by the applicant. That speaks directly to alternatives, as well as the minimum variance necessary. They point out that the building envelope on Lot Two does not appear to be correct, and that it would not have a conforming building envelope for which to reasonably develop with a single-family residence and accessory structures. That's right to character of the neighborhood. There are alternatives here. They raise the cluster. This is, the, I would respectfully offer that the right way for this lot to be divided, if it's going to be divided, is to go through the Planning Board process first, get something that satisfies the planning concerns of increasing density, of creating a new lot that doesn't meet zoning in an environmentally sensitive area. This lot, this, this memo also speaks to this property being in the Aquifer Protection District, and the limitations, both of either this one lot or the lots that are proposed to be created, and the, the clearing that's required associated with that. None of that information has been provided by the applicant. We all know the value of land out here. This, if, if the applicant wants to develop this property, which was bought as one lot just a couple of years ago, they, they, it's not unreasonable to expect them to do a little bit more heavy lifting than just trying to get the variance first and, and then go to the Planning Board.
Okay. Appreciate your comments. I don't know if, is the last thing I wanna, I, I don't, I'm sorry, I, I don't know that I object to the application. I really don't. I wanna emphasize that. I, I, I've met the owner. He seems like a nice guy. Would I prefer that there be one lot there rather than two? Yes. Does that mean that two lots can't be established next door to me in a way that protects the character of the neighborhood and offsets the growth impacts? Everybody talks about the school enrollment in East Quag. You're gonna get a year full of that if you haven't already on other land-use applications, but these are directly relevant to your decision. And, and if my concerns are, are addressed in the Planning Board application, you may not see me again in, in person or in writing, but as the most affected property owner, the guy who owns the house, the, my only house to the west of this, this, this has an opportunity to affect, as I mentioned last time, both the value of my property and the quality of, of my life there. And I would respectfully ask this board to not entertain a variance decision until more homework is done by the applicant. Meeting these variance standards are the job of the applicant, not this board and not me as a neighboring property owner. They're asking you to vary the zoning requirements. That's their burden, not, not yours. Okay. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. So, we have to decide what to do. I think, unless anything is changed, I think I know what we're gonna do. So, Helen was the lead on the application, is, uh-
Someone else wanted to take the lead?
I guess I'll take the lead on this one. Being that majority of the board, at least three of the board members here tonight, wanna close the public hearing, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
And, and closing the public hearing, and then we would have a decision ready at our October eighteenth meeting.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Mr. Daly?
Nay.
I'm gonna reluctantly vote aye, just, just, just to go along with my colleagues for this. All right. So, decision, October eighteenth. Okay, thank you.
You have a good evening, everyone.
You, too.
Now, I get decisions.
Determination matter of the application of Anthony O'Farrell in Kathleen Buckley, one-ten Coltspring Point Road, Tuck Hall, New York, Suffolk County, tax map nine-hundred dash one fifty-five dash one dash twenty-seven. I'm gonna read the relief at the end. Also, it's eleven thousand eight hundred sixty-five square, square feet, and north on our forty zoning district, AE six flood zone, so you know. Approval from, conditional resolutional approval from the con board. Tim McCully was the attorney representing. We feel that it passes the five-part test, so therefore, this board grants relief from following provisions of the Town Code. One for a proposed two-story dwelling on a non-conforming lot, relief from Town Code three-thirty-eight-three K, yards for a rear yard setback of thirty-one feet to the proposed dwelling, and to twenty-six feet for the proposed porch, where thirty-five feet is permitted, and Town Code three-thirty-eight-four D, pyramid height, for a proposed encroachment in the amount of a hundred and eighty-five point two cubic feet, three point two cubic feet on the north side, and ninety-five cubic feet on the east side, and eighty-seven cubic feet on the west side. For two, for the deck attached to the proposed two-story dwelling, relief from Town Code three-thirty-eleven, residential district stable of dimensional regulations, for an accessory side yard setback of thirteen point five feet, where twenty feet is required. And three, for a proposed outdoor shower to be located within the total required side yard of the principal dwelling, relief from Town Code three-thirty-seven-six D, placement of accessory buildings, structures and uses in all districts, Town Code three-thirty-eight-three C, yards, and Town Code three-thirty-eleven for an accessory side yard setback of eleven point five feet, where twenty feet is required. The relief is granted for structures shown in the survey prepared by Gary J. Benz, surveyed November five, two thousand and fourteen, last revised February twenty-seven, two thousand and eighteen, and the elevations prepared by Michael C. Gentile, architect, PC, dated, um, I don't have the date there. The granted foregoing relief, subject to such other conditions permits as applicant has already acquired and may have to, otherwise have to acquire for final approval of subject premises.
We'll get that date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair of the side?
I will.
I have a determination, determination of the matter of the application of Soji Homes LLC. This is for sixteen, sixteen Chevyats Road in Shinnick Hawk Hills, tax number nine-hundred two-ten-one fifty-nine. There were two Soji homes at the last meeting. This is the one with the pool, not with the tennis court. So, they were looking for relief to propose a pool in front yard, and also relief to locate the pool with accessory distance, with a, an accessory distance from street setback of thirty-four point eight feet, where seventy feet is required, and any other relief necessary. There was a prior determination of this board on May fourth, two thousand and seventeen, decision number D zero-one-seven-zero-seven-six, that found that the lot is in sigil and separate, type due pursuant to SECRE. Testimony at the public hearing by Jeff Ulysses, agent for the applicant, is basically that lot is vacant land, undersized lot, and is burdened by two front yards, Chevyats Road and Deepo Road, and the applicant is proposing a two-story residence, first and second-story decks, and a proposed in-ground pool, and he needs relief for the pool. We did ask that the applicant agree to condition a determination of the board on screening with Leland Cypress trees in addition to the proposed fence around the pool. There was no opposition. It passes the five-part test. Therefore, this board grants relief to the applicant from zoning code three-thirty-seven-six D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and relief from zoning code three-thirty-eight-three C, yards for the placement of a proposed pool in a front yard, and relief from zoning code three-thirty-eleven, residence table of this district of dimensional regulations, for an accessory distance from street setback of thirty-four point eight feet, where seventy feet is required for a proposed pool. This relief is conditioned on the applicant planting and the applicant to future owners of the property maintaining, screening of the pool by Leland Cypress trees, at least eight feet in height and six feet on center, starting at the southerly boundary of the proposed first-floor deck on the west side, then heading south and east, then north around the proposed pool fence, and ending at the proposed first-floor deck on the east side. The proposed pool will have the dimensional requirements and location as shown in the survey of Joe Sakafico, dated December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, last revised July seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, which was submitted with the application and incorporated herein, and any other permits the applicant requires for the proposed pool to be built at the subject property.
Second.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Chair of the side?
The decision in matter of the application of Aspen Bear, four-nineteen Paul's Lane, Bridgehampton, New York, Suffolk County, tax map nine-hundred dash one oh four dash one dash thirteen point zero zero three. And I'll just ring you guys' bell a little bit. This was the application. Can Judge brought forward to us? There's two pre-existing dwellings there. They wanna demo one, build a new house, and convert the other to a carriage house, okay? And there's actually no increase in density. The lot's pretty, very large flats, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-nine square feet, and in our eighty zoning district. I'll read the relief at the end, so you folks know, but it's the five-part test. And therefore, and for the reasons set forth herein, this board grants applicant relief from three-thirty-nine, density incentive provisions to allow an existing dwelling to be converted into a carriage house. One, three-thirty-nine D four, to permit a waiver of the transfer of a development right where one or more development rights, TDR, Pine Barrens, credit, PBC, shall be transferred to the site. Two, three-thirty-nine D four C, a front yard setback of thirty-one point two feet from Paul's Lane, where a setback of at least ten feet greater than the principal dwelling setback is required. Three, three-thirty-nine four, nine D four H, to allow two access driveways where access to the principal dwelling and the carriage house shall be limited to one driveway, and variance from Town Code three-thirty-seven-seven D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in residence districts, to allow proposed rear yard coverage of twenty-nine point two percent, where a maximum of twenty percent is permitted, as depicted, depicted on the progress site plan of Eric Woodward, architect, dated seven eighteen eighteen, and last revised eight thirty eighteen. Granted a foregoing relief, subject to such-
in a carriage house shall be limited to one driveway and a variance from Town Code 330-77D placement of accessory building structures and uses in residence districts to allow a proposed rear yard coverage of 29.2 percent where a maximum of 20 percent is permitted as depicted, depicted on the progress site plan of Eric Woodward, Architect, dated 7/18/18 and last revised 8/30/18. Granted a foregoing relief if subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired, may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I have a determination of the matter of the application of Selguero Rental Properties, Inc. This is for 35A Maple Avenue in Flanders, Tax Map Number 900-144-266.1. I'm gonna relieve, read the relief at the end, but basically this is relief for the expansion of additions to two dwellings on a single lot. There also originally was relief requested for an asphalt shed, but that relief was subsequently withdrawn by the applicant. This is property that is 6,000 square feet in size in the R15 zoning district, so it is a very small lot. They have COs for most of the structures except for an asphalt shed on the property. We did get a letter from Howard Ludlow, Chairman of the Conservation Board, indicating that they are eligible for a letter of John jurisdiction pursuant to Chapter 325 Wetlands of the Town Code. We also got correspondence from Dennis O'Rourke indicating that the percentage of increase in the two dwellings in total in terms of habitable living space is 41 percent towards their 50 percent. Type two pursuant to secret. Testimony at the public hearing by Eva Aquino, agent for the applicant, was that the applicant is seeking setback in pyramid relief to expand both existing dwellings on the patio to allow additional living space in both, space in both structures. In addition, will the applicant initially sought relief for the, an asphalt shed? The applicant subsequently sent an email to this board that they intend to remove the asphalt shed. They purchased the property in 2017 and will be updating the existing septic system as part of this project, 41 percent expansion. There was no opposition to the application. It passes the five-part test. Therefore, this board grants applicant relief from zoning code 330-115C continuance for a principal minimum side yard setback of 4.9 feet where 5.1 feet is existing. Relief from 330-116 extension as it relates to 330-167B1A specific types of variances to permit an expansion of a non-conforming use. 330-84D pyramid height for a proposed encroachment in the amount of 267 cubic feet, which is in addition to the existing 469 cubic feet of pyramid encroachment for, for all four proposed addition to the northerly dwelling of the two existing dwellings on a single lot. Relief from 330-116 extension as it relates to 330-167B1A specific types of variances to permit an expansion of a non-conforming use and pyramid relief of 8.5 cubic feet in addition to the 609 cubic feet that exists, all for proposed additions to the southerly dwelling of the two existing dwellings on a single lot. The proposed additions to the northerly dwelling and the southerly dwelling, being two existing dwellings on a single lot, will have the dimensional requirements and location on the, on the survey of Kenneth Wojcik, Surveyor, dated December 5, 2016, last revised April 12, 2018, and the plans and pyramid sketch for the additions to the two residences by Edward Armis, Engineer, dated September 4, 2018, which was submitted with the application and incorporated herein. The grant of this relief is conditioned on the removal of the asphalt shed in the southwest corner of the property. Grant of the going relief is additionally subject to the conditions of any permits the applicant requires for final approval of the proposed additions to the northerly and southerly dwelling, dwellings on the subject property, or the additions to be built on the subject property.
Second.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I have a matter in the applicant of Joseph Levinite, 11 Mountain Laurel Lane, Tuckahoe, New York, Suffolk County, Tax Map Number 900-129-235.6. The applicant requests relief from the following from Town Code 330-11 residential districts table for an accessory side yard setback of 12.3 feet at the southeast corner and 15.6 feet where setback is 20 feet is required to allow a shed to remain that was built without the benefit of the permit in 2003 within the minimum and total side yard of the principal dwelling. It's a 52,000 square foot, 311 square foot property in R80 zoning and we felt that it, the five-part test and in the, we grant the applicant relief from Town Code 330-11 to legalize the location of that shed to, at 12.3 feet and 15.6 feet where a setback of 20 feet is required. And 330-83C to allow the shed to remain within the minimum and total side yard of the principal dwelling as depicted in the survey of AJC Land Surveying, PLLC, May 18, 2018. Grant of the foregoing relief is subject to the conditions of such other permits as the applicant has acquired or may otherwise need for final approval.
Second.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to close.
No.
Nope. Got more?
I have a decision in matter of the application-
Oh, that's right.
-of Birmingham in Bridgehampton, Et Al. Okay? You there with me a little bit here, guys? Yeah, mate?
It's gonna be fun.
There is five parcels involved, so you guys know, they all have separate tax map numbers. They actually start with 900-83-1, file numbers being 14, 20, 21, 22, and 23.5. The subject premises is located on Montauk Island, Bridgehampton, within a shopping center business zoning district. The premises comprised of five lots identified with different tax map numbers, as I said, totally, totally totaling approximately 30.2 acres and is improving existing shopping center that benefits from various certificates of occupancy and compliance that are maintained in the file for the application. The board classified the application as a type one action pursuant to State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRA, and coordinated with the Southampton Town Planning Board, New York State Department of Transportation. And applicant initially requested variances in connection with the parking space requirements, but withdrew the request for relief as the Planning Board by resolution adopted August 23, 2018, granted a waiver of 101 parking spaces pursuant to Town Code 330-100, provided that the applicant obtain an easement from the adjoining property owner to the north to allow for the construction of 100 spaces, including associated retaining walls, landscaping, lining, and utility relocations, and one space land banked within the existing shopping center parking lot. The ownership of the beach-
Not, you have to read that.
No?
But not.
County Department of Health Services by a resolution dated October 9, 2017, this board agreed that the Southampton Town Planning Board should assume lead agency. By resolution adopted August 23, 2018, the Planning Board adopted a negative deck under SECRA and irrelevant provisions of the Southampton Town Code, finding no environmental issues with the proposal as designed. Attorney for the applicant, Tim McCully, appeared before the board stating that the applicant seeks to construct a 17,009 square foot addition to the DJ Max Building in order to bring in a Marshall store. Mr. McCully stated that the addition of the Marshall's building on parcel two result in a total lot coverage of 32 percent where 29 percent is existing, or overall for both lots, 26.8 percent where 25.4 percent is existing. Mr. McCully also stated that a variance is requested in order to provide for a covered walkway for pedestrians, which Mr. McCully informed the board was a request on the Planning Board to improve pedestrian access to and from the store and the parking lot. Now that the parking has been addressed by planning, the revised request for variances passes the five-part test. All right. And therefore, this board grants relief from the following Town Code provisions for an addition to an existing non-conforming building. One, Town Code 330-167B1, specific types of variances to allow a 17,009 square foot expansion of an existing 152,512 square foot building where floor dimensions for the buildings in the SCB zone shall be limited to 15,000 square feet per building lot. Town Code 330-34, business district stable of dimensional regulations for a front yard setback of 22.4 feet from Snake Hollow Road where 27.4 feet is, is existing for a proposed canopy on the east side addition and Town Code 330-167B1D to allow a 32 percent lot coverage where 29 percent is existing and a maximum of 20 percent is permitted. These variances are granted for structures as shown on the site development plans prepared by Joseph A. Deal or Bowler Engineering dated March 24, 2015, last revised July 13, 2018. Granted a foregoing relief is also subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Nay.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to close.
Hang on a second.
On the favor.